I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmer's Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 7:01 PM on May the 4th, 2017. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I ask that you please rise and join me as Worship Pastor John Fox from the North Side Baptist Church in Carrollton leads the board's opening prayer and remain standing afterward for our pledges. Reverend Fox?
Father, it's good to be in here tonight. We're so thankful, Lord, for the members of this board, for this Carrollton Farmer's Branch School District, Lord. We're thankful for each and every one that gives their heart, gives their life, their time, and so much of their efforts, Lord, to see that the education of our youth takes place. And, Lord, we pray over this board, over this meeting tonight, that you would give them, Lord, clarity, give them vision, Lord. I pray tonight that we'd have wisdom and knowledge, Lord, to make the decisions that need to be made. We're so thankful for your goodness in our lives. We thank you for the United States of America, the freedoms that we have to gather, and pray, God, that as decisions are made tonight, as this meeting goes forward, Lord, that would also keep in mind, Lord, what a great country we have, keep in mind what a privilege it is to have the freedoms that we have. For us in Jesus Christ, in the name we pray these things. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. May be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for each student. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, actions, and decisions. You will get to see all the deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with attorney, and real estate. Excuse me. For the record, board members present are James Goode, Randy Shackman, Richard Fleming, Nancy Klein, Guillermo Ramos, and myself, John Matthews. We do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. As required by Board Policy, BBD Local, let the minutes also reflect that all board members have met or exceeded the number of continuing education training hours required for 2016. We will now proceed with Agenda Item Number Two, Student Achievement Presentation. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, and members of the board and our audience, welcome this evening. If you haven't been with us before, I'll give you a little philosophy lesson. We believe that you make the main thing the first thing, and the main thing in our district is our students. So we always start each board meeting talking about student achievement. And tonight, fine arts, well, we really believe that fine arts are essential. They're not an extra part of our curriculum, they're an essential part of it. And so we are proud to present to you our fine arts in our school district, and I'm going to turn over to Ms. Warnock.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. We have one goal in our district, high achievement for each student, and we get there as we are guided by four objectives. First, continuously improving student learning. Second, continuously improve the learning environment. Third, to continuously improve our operational effectiveness. And lastly, to continuously improve our community support. We believe that fine arts is essential in all of those pieces of our district. We know that student learning is improved, there is irrefutable research about the value of fine arts as it applies to students' academic growth, to their social-emotional, their growth in the social-emotional domain, as well as the connection to mathematics and achievement overall. PSAT and SAT score research is also connected to students' participation in fine arts. So we are so proud that the Board of Trustees promotes a robust program of fine arts and continues to support that vision for every child. We have several students that are here with us tonight for various different presentations. So raise your hand if you're a student in CFB. Okay, so we have several students. So I want you to stand up if you're part of a fine arts program in CFB. Yes, so thank you. So to learn a little bit more about our program in the fine arts, it is my absolute pleasure to introduce our wonderful fine arts director who brings so much value to his work, to the teachers and the students of our district, Mr. Brett Farr.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Matthews, and members of the board. It is my distinct privilege to stand here before you this evening representing the Fine Arts Department. Each year, our department encounters a whole new world of creative opportunities. From day one, it's been our desire to aim higher in our efforts to educate our students in the fine arts. Tonight, we're going to show you a video that has literally taken a year to compile, and you will see pictures and video representing every area underneath our fine arts umbrella. But before we take a few minutes to share the video, I want to take a moment and thank Dawn Valentine, our coordinator of fine arts, standing right here. She's done the lion's share of the work on this video presentation, and she does a great job with the video every year, especially with all the little adjustments that I endlessly ask for, so I greatly appreciate her. Likewise, I would like to thank Mr. Chris Allen, who's the Director of Theater at RL Turner, for narrating our video. In addition to Dawn, I would like to recognize Pam Appolucci, our Fine Arts Secretary. Now Pam was unable to be here tonight, but she serves a vital role in our department and kind of serves as the knower of all things. At least that's what she tells me. I would also like to recognize our Fine Arts Clerk, Kathy Jackson, who is here this evening. Kathy's back there. Kathy is the first person you will encounter if you call or come by our offices. She does a great job in working with the community and with our teachers. All three of these ladies play a crucial role in facilitating our programs as they work hand in hand with our teachers. Finally, I would like to take a second and recognize our faculty members who are here with us this evening. Their talent and hard work is the foundation for the successes that we enjoy in our department. As you know, this is a busy time of the year for fine arts, with multiple plays and concerts just about every night of the week, as my gasoline bill will attest to. So I just want to take this time and ask them if they would stand so we could show our appreciation to them. If you're a fine arts teacher? Thank you so much. The Fine Arts Department has long felt there is a strong relationship between arts education and positive emotional development of our students. We also believe the arts allow for deep engagement in both learning and understanding. The arts promote self-awareness, self-expression, self-confidence, as well as the ability to communicate effectively and to grow in both humility and empathy. We ask our students to learn from their mistakes, and we always ask them to dream big when engaging their creative potential. It is my hope, as you watch this video, these traits will be evident and the accomplishments of our students will be obvious. So without further delay, we will begin our video presentation, which will give you a comprehensive look at this year's accomplishments.
Walt Disney once said, "If you dream it, you can do it." This belief is at the core of the CFB Fine Arts Department. Not only do we encourage our students to dream, we encourage them to dream big. We believe that these dreams guide our students' visions for the future, much like a lighthouse in the distance guiding their way. In CFB, our students are constantly encouraged by their teachers to find the creative spark that ignites their passion to achieve what some view as impossible. Through this determination, what seems impossible becomes possible, and what becomes possible swiftly moves to probable, and what is probable eventually becomes inevitable. With talented students and highly qualified teachers, our students recognize that a dream is also a journey. This journey requires discipline, commitment, time, desire, and courage. It also requires that our students take the aspirations of their minds and hearts and shape them into a clear vision with solid goals and objectives. In the Carrollton Farmer's Branch Independent School District, we consider our mission to help each student chase their dream. We consider it a privilege to lay the foundation and open the door to learning for our students. Through a challenging curriculum and with capable and talented teachers, our students are given the support to recognize and embrace the potential that they have inside themselves and for believing that their individual dreams can come true.
Only as high as I reach can I grow.
Only as far as I seek can I go.
Only as deep as I look can I see.
Only as much as I dream can I be.
Karen Ramm.
Nowhere can the dare-to-dream trait be more evident than in the imagination and creativity of our elementary music and art students. With the guidance of 52 elementary music and art educators, our 11,726 elementary music and art students have given over 270 concerts and art presentations throughout the year, and there are currently 1,708 students involved in after-school musical groups and art clubs. Additionally, many of our students' musical and artistic works have been recognized by the PTA Reflections Competition and the Dart Rail Art Contest. Six of our students from McCoy Elementary won PTA state-level awards. Isaac Pelusi's musical composition received an honorable mention. Kashmir Akhur's musical composition received the Award of Merit, and Anuya Das in Visual Arts and Aditi Vikram in Dance Choreography received the Award of Excellence. In addition to Aditi's PTA Award, she also won the State Fair's Blue Ribbon Award and was voted Best of Show for her children's theme artwork. Gavin Bloom and Kashmir Akhur advanced to the PTA national level in Film Production and Visual Arts. Also, Kashmir Akhur won the K through 2nd Grade Division for the Dart Contest, and Mahika Gupta won the State Contest for the Don't Mess with Texas Calendar Cover. CFB is also proud that two of our students, David Choi from Rosemead Elementary and Faith Choi from Blaylock Middle School, won first place in the Sonatina and Sonata International Youth Piano Competition and were honored with a performance in New York City in the Wild Recital Hall at Carnegie Hall.
Dream what you dare to dream.
Go where you want to go.
Be what you want to be or let it go.
In a year of tremendous competition, the CFB Speech and Debate Teams have been successful with wins across the state and nation. With an enrollment of 207 high school students, our teams stand out as some of the finest examples of public speaking and competitive oratory. This year, our students participated in 37 tournaments with 18 first-place wins. In a highly competitive year, we are proud that Creekview had several students who competed at the state level and achieved recognition at quarter and semifinals. Additionally, Kate Niall and Lexi Putter from Creekview were selected as national qualifiers in humorous interpretation.
Dreams are the touchstones of our character. Henry David Thoreau.
There could be no better platform for dreaming big than in our theater classrooms. As our 1,617 theater students develop characters from both real life and fiction, they learn to listen, understand, interpret, and empathize. Our students' accomplishments include 81 public performances, including UIL performances, where all four high schools advanced to district with Ranchview, RL Turner, and Smith advancing to by district, and Smith advancing to area, region, and state. With an incredible performance, we are proud that Newman Smith's production of "The Shining Lights" was selected as fourth place in the state competition. In both our middle school and high school programs, our students have racked up 14 Best Actor and All-Star Cast selections. Each of our high school programs produced major musicals that were a tremendous success in our communities and schools. Creekview produced the classic "The Sound of Music" with tremendous response, while Newman Smith delighted audiences with "Sister Ant." RL Turner produced "Beauty and the Beast," to much acclaim, while Ranchview's inaugural musical production of "Annie Junior" was met with great enthusiasm.
The future is always to be built within the beauty of their dreams. Ever the best.
The precision and expertise needed to coordinate the movements in a dance or drill routine require a high level of skill and coordination. In CFB, it is our goal that all 816 of our dance and drill students be empowered to express themselves, both as a part of a larger group and as individuals. Dreaming big about the possibilities of expression through dance will motivate our students to perfect their movements, to tell a story or communicate a message. Combined, Creekview and Newman Smith have four students selected to participate in the Texas Dance Educators Association All-State Dance Team in Houston. Newman Smith High School participated in the Dance Educators Assessment of Learning, receiving a first-division rating. Creekview, Newman Smith, and RL Turner Drill Teams received sweepstakes and judges' awards in competitions across the state. Miles Canange from Creekview received an Award of Excellence at the state level for his PTA entry in dance choreography, and combined our dance and drill programs performed 95 times this year for school and community groups.
Every great dream begins with a dreamer.
Always remember, you have within you the strength, the patience.
And the passion to reach for the stars to change the world. Period. Amen.
To form something from nothing is a regular occurrence in our CFB secondary art rooms. Students are encouraged to envision what the end product should look like and then begin their projects with the end in mind. All of our 2,336 secondary art students have a curriculum that is challenging, creative, and sequential, to allow the students to analyze, design, and think critically. Our students' accomplishments include 64 public art displays and 200 students involved in after-school secondary art clubs. Our students' work has been recognized at Young Masters, Vase, PTA Reflections, along with other contests. Creekview was honored to have three students who were selected through the O'Donnell Foundation AP Strategies Program to have their work displayed at the Dallas Museum of Art. This year, we have eight pieces of artwork that were selected to advance to state vase. These include three Newman Smith students, Catherine Burchett, Anna Martinez, and two pieces from Zoe Porsche, along with four Ranchview students, Megan Black, Elena Rodriguez, Audrey Given, and Sydney Shan. State PTA Reflection winners include an Honorable Mention Award to Valerie Ramirez from Polk in Photography. In the Visual Art category, Cassandra Scully from Long and Violet Smith from Creekview received an Award of Merit, and Joseph Simpson from Polk received an Award of Excellence. Newman Smith's Madison Diaz, Yankel Castillo, Marina Sade were accepted out of thousands of works submitted for the Texas Visual Arts Association High School Competition.
A dream doesn't become reality through magic.
It takes sweat, determination, and hard work, color palette.
The state of Texas proudly boasts some of the finest public school music organizations in the country. CFB is proud that the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has once again recognized the CFB music programs as one of the 2017 Best Communities in the Nation for Elementary and Secondary Music Programs. This is the 10th time our district has been recognized by the NAM organization. Our bands, choirs, and orchestras at both the middle and high school levels have an incredible reputation for success and for providing a thorough music education for our students. Additionally, CFB has a growing AP Music Theory Program that gives our students a solid foundation for college-level music programs. This year, 5,563 secondary students are participating in our secondary music programs. There is no doubt, with summer band rehearsals, numerous after-school and before-school sectionals, that our students understand that dreams are only accomplished through hard work and determination. Our students' accomplishments include over 540 combined performances. We are proud that Juliana Matheson from Blaylock received the Award of Merit, and Joseph Kim from Creekview received an Honorable Mention Award in PTA state music composition. Additionally, in state music competitions, 234 of our musicians reached the district level of competition, 308 reached the region level, and six reached the all-state level, representing our district at the highest level. Those who performed as a part of the TMEA all-state organizations were Creekview's Jessica Hausmann and Newman Smith's Aidan Black, who were selected to the All-State Trouble Choir, and Rolando Berna and Raymond Francois from Creekview, who were selected to perform in the All-State Mixed Choir. Additionally, Jayla Whitfield from Ranchview was selected to be in the Texas Small School All-State Mixed Choir, and Raymond Lynn was selected to the ATSSB All-State Symphonic Band. We are excited that our music ensembles have had a record 60 combined UIL sweepstakes awards. All four of our marching bands received first divisions at UIL Marching, and the Ranchview Marching Band advanced to area with a fantastic performance in Denton, Texas. In addition to their competitions, our students regularly give back to the community by performing in hospitals, nursing homes, civic clubs, the MLK Parade, and other great causes around the metroplex. Of the 24,345 students in the Carrollton Farmer's Branch Independent School District, about 20,000 of our students are currently enrolled in some area of our fine arts program. It is our mission to create an environment where each of our students are empowered and encouraged to reach their academic and creative potential while developing a lifelong appreciation for the fine arts. In CFB, we are proud that in our effort to inspire our students, 20 of our current teachers who participated in our district's fine arts programs are now giving back to the district as fine arts educators. With 1,095 public performances and presentations, over 20,000 students being served by our fine arts faculty and staff, 60 combined UIL sweepstakes, six all-state musicians, 13 state PTA Reflections winners, state and national winners in speech and debate, Newman Smith Theater, fourth place in state UIL one act play, eight state vase winners, and four all-state dance students, the fine arts in CFB are alive and well. With the unwavering support of the CFB Administration and Board of Trustees, the CFB Fine Arts Department is committed to the district's goal of high achievement for each student and salutes our entire fine arts faculty for using their time and talent to inspire our students to dream big. CFB Fine Arts, aiming higher.
I think through the video, we see students that are engaged, empowered, inspired because of the work every day that teachers do in the classroom. Parents in our community have a choice where they send their schools, and public school is the choice because of the amazing programs we provide, like the ones that we saw tonight. Theater, visual arts, choir, orchestra, dance, speech and debate, band, the musicals, personalized lessons, and rich, rich instruction in fine arts to make a well-rounded child is part of the reason why we support our fine arts programs in CFB, why we're thankful for these educators, and why we're so grateful for the options available to students in our public schools. So, thank you, Dr. Burns. That concludes our presentation.
I would like to second everything Ms. Warnock said. You may not see a bigger fine arts fan in this room than I am, and I have been for many, many years, in all those years I've been right here, and I can tell you firsthand that back when I was an administrator, whenever we got to go evaluate, we had to go evaluate teachers, I always loved it when I had to go evaluate one of our fine arts teachers because I knew, man, choir, after art, any of the things you just got through seeing, I would just sit there, we had to take notes, I would just sit there and soak it all in, and it was magnificent, and it was hell-bent, and folks, it's getting better under the direction of Mr. Farr and Dawn. I'm telling you, it's a fantastic program, and we're so proud of y'all. Board members? Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Klein?
I was just going to mention at the breakfast this morning for the mayor's prayer breakfast, we were proud of seeing Creekview sing the National Anthem. They did a great job.
Man, they were spot-on. I mean, not a missed note anywhere. It was incredible. Any other comments or questions, board members?
Just applause.
Just applause, that says a lot. Our next agenda item is recognition of special guest and announcements. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, members of the board. Incredible student performances, incredible teachers, and we have some more incredible people that we want to introduce next, and that's through our very important professional program, and we just like to think, very incredible people program. And so tonight, we continue our tradition of honoring those people that every day make a commitment to the students that they serve and the students in this school district to make their life better and to make achievement possible for them. We also have some VIPs. We have some bags for you there that have some notes in them from people expressing their gratitude for you for what you have done for them, both colleagues and students, just a little token of a special thanks for what you do for the students of the school district. And we have probably friends and relatives here to that to celebrate these very incredible people, so when they're introduced, we're going to ask you to stand so that we can, you can join us in honoring them, and at this time, we're going to see these incredible people. So, Mr. Matthews, would you join me in the front?
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Board of Trustees, colleagues, VIPs, their families, and coworkers. My name is Michael Miller. I serve Newman Smith High School as one of its assistant principals. On behalf of the Newman Smith High School faculty and staff representing Mr. Joe Pouncy Principal, I'd like to present to you our 2017 VIP, Mr. David McGill.
Mr. McGill began teaching in 1986 at Grand Prairie High School. After one semester, he quickly made his way to Newman Smith High School, where he has served our campus ever since. Over the last 31 years, Mr. McGill has educated students in the following subjects: woodworking, mechanical drafting, computer-aided design, construction education, and today, he teaches four periods of construction technology and supervises our co-op practicum, students who work in the local community. Additionally, for the past two years, he has served as our Career Technology Education Department Chair, assisting with the refocusing of the Science and Engineering Pathway, supporting our International Business Academy, and facilitating the discussion and implementation of an ever-changing career technology education curriculum. Mr. McGill earned his Bachelor of Arts degree from Texas A&amp;M, majoring in industrial arts. He enhanced that degree with a vocational certification from the University of North Texas. Some of his notable contributions to the Newman Smith community include leading students in woodworking competitions, helping to start, design, and lead the robotics program, supervising local, area, network parties. Basically, that's a late-night fundraiser for robotics, and it's what online gaming is before there was such a thing. And serving as a senior class sponsor and as a Spark sponsor. If you're familiar with HGTV, where people flip houses and make needed home repairs, Mr. McGill and his construction students are Newman Smith's virgin of HGTV. Countless times, a colleague or an administrator will ask him and his students to build or repair school items. Painting walls, building benches, creating organized workspaces, fixing furniture, or tending to classroom repairs are regular tasks for him and his students. One colleague said, "He is the behind-the-scenes..." One colleague said, "He is the behind-the-scenes go-to guy for this campus when it comes to fixing things, moving things, or painting." She adds, "This recognition is not his thing, but he deserves it." Another said, "He is laid back, and he is always sincere and kind. He made benches for Mrs. Parrish, her aides, and her students to sit on while they wait for the bus to pick them up." Still another said, "David McGill is such an asset to Newman Smith. He not only does a terrific job with his students, but he and his class put those construction skills to use all over the building. I can't say enough how much we appreciate him." And possibly my favorite quote, "He supports us in all facets of our class. He even wore that empathy belly, that eight-month-pregnant-weighted vest." She add, "We have pictures." Maybe I should let Mr. McGill speak. Here is what he recently told me. "I love it when I see our students being with individual and school pride. I do every time I hear them say, 'Hey, I fixed that,' or 'I built that.' I enjoy being the student's confidant, building a relationship with each student. I check their grades and I counsel them on the side. I love showing students how to become proficient with these tools and in life." For these merited reasons, we at Newman Smith High School are proud to have Mr. David McGill be our 2017 recipient for the VIP Award. Congratulations, Mr. McGill.
I am Michael Arriola, and I have the honor of serving as the principal of the Early College High School at Brookhaven College. Tonight, on behalf of our students and staff, I would like to recognize Mrs. Janine Powell as our 2016-17 VIP. To give you an idea of the kind of person Mrs. Powell is, I will start off with the message Mrs. Powell sends her students away with at the end of every class. Remember that each and every one of you, as you go from this place with curiosity, mistakes, and perseverance, you absolutely have the knowledge and the power to succeed. Each of us in this room remembers a teacher that made us believe in ourselves and pushed us to raise our personal expectations every single day. Mrs. Powell is that teacher. While she currently teaches English at Early College High School, Mrs. Powell also serves as the head of the English department, is the leader of our campus-wide literacy initiative, sponsors the Ignite Group, which advocates for young women to be involved in politics, and is a doctoral student at Southern Methodist University. Mrs. Powell is a true example of a lifelong learner. In her 10 years at Early College High School, she has exemplified the values of an ECHS teacher. She is flexible, hard-working, driven, and extremely invested in the lives of her students and colleagues. Her colleagues put it best when they said, "Mrs. Powell is one of a kind, genuine, neat, organized, and a great help at all times. She is always available to lend an ear, share her valuable experience, and provide guidance. She seems to be personally invested in everyone's professional and personal growth." Her students recognize her passion and unwavering commitment to them. One student shared this sentiment, which was echoed by many others. "Thank you for not giving up on us and continuing to help us in English, even when we don't have you as a teacher. Thank you so much for believing in me." Another said of Mrs. Powell, "I don't think there's a more perfect role model than you. You have taught us so many valuable lessons the past few years, and we are all very thankful for you." It is my great honor to recognize Mrs. Janine Powell as the Early College High School 2016-17 VIP.
My name is Brooke Hall, and it is my privilege to serve as the principal at RL Turner High School. It is my pleasure tonight to honor our newest member of the very important profession of First, I have to say that this is the seventh time I've presented a VIP to this board, but this is the first time the VIP has brought me the speech already written to introduce himself to you. But this is because Jonathan, whom we all fondly refer to as Wilk, is a humble man with a servant's heart, who will struggle mightily to stand here for these few minutes and let me brag about him. Wilk has been an athletic trainer at Turner for the past 10 years. He married the love of his life, Autumn, who's here tonight, in 2009, and they have two beautiful boys, Timothy, who is five, and Jace, four. Wilk started as a student athletic trainer at Ullis Trinity High School, under the guidance of one of his mentors, head athletic trainer Mike Pruitt. He says Coach Pruitt helped him through some tough times in his life, and Wilk soon realized he wanted to follow in his footsteps. When he graduated from high school in 2000, he knew he wanted to pursue a degree in sports medicine. With his degree in hand from Midwestern State, Wilk joined the Turner family in 2007. His official job description is Head Athletic Trainer and Sports Medicine Teacher, but unofficially, he's the hall monitor, the phone fixer, the delivery man, the testing coordinator's assistant, the giver of free medical advice, the checker of any ache or pain you might have, and the willing smile for anyone who needs it. There's not much that Wilk won't do for his Turner family. When I asked Coach Wilk's students about him, they told me, "He goes out of his way to help his students and teach them right from wrong." So he not only teaches us what we need to know to be good athletic trainers, but also what we need to know to be good, kind-hearted people. Another student says, "He's understanding. If you want to talk about something, he'll listen and give advice. He's just a nice guy." Wilk's colleagues are no less complimentary. Fellow trainer Kenesha Wolford says, "There is no one more deserving of this honor than Jonathan Wilk. His selfless acts of kindness are what I love the most. I have the pleasure of working with him day in and day out, and I admire his people skills with anyone from a parent to the local police officers. As my mentor, I never have to think twice about reaching out to Jonathan for advice, personal or professional. His words of wisdom always generate a great impact in my life. As I journey through my professional career, I strive to be a well-rounded individual like Jonathan, an individual that people will remember for years to come." Turner Athletic Coordinator Mike Ramirez echoes these words, saying, "When I think of Jonathan Wilk, the first thing that comes to mind is reliability. No matter the situation, the hour, the location, you can count on Wilk to be there. He is always the first one here and the last one to leave." He told me that I need to let him go home right after this because this is past his bedtime. He works incredibly hard at mastering his craft and being a leader in his field. He is a tremendous mentor to both young trainers and student trainers. He goes above and beyond, taking initiative to constantly make our program more efficient and effective. It has been a privilege and an honor to work with and get to know him. And finally, CFB Athletic Director Renee Putter explains that Jonathan is always there when you need him, and even when you don't know you need him. He is one of the most dependable people I've known. He's always there to pitch in, go above and beyond, and help without being asked." If you ask Wilk, he'll tell you that his wife, Autumn, deserves this award for putting up with the many long hours that he spends away from his family. But Wilk's students and colleagues, his family and friends, insist that he is the true VIP, and so it is with great pleasure that I introduce Jonathan Wilk as RL Turner's newest member of the very important profession of teaching. Congratulations.
We're going to go about incredible students, incredible staff. We have an incredible event that we do in this district called Casey's Run.
Dr. Burns, Mr. Matthews, members of the school board and administration. My name is Rolando Bernal, and I am a senior at Creekview High School. I have had the honor of serving as a student coordinator for Casey's Run alongside my peers from Creekview, Early College, Newman Smith, Ranchview, and RL Turner. Tonight, it is my great pleasure to share with you the success of Casey's Run 2017. Casey's Run is named after Casey Breckus, a 2003 graduate from RL Turner High School, a former student coordinator of the Turner Torch Run, and an active leader in countless school and community organizations. Seizing the opportunity to give herself, Casey developed a passion for assisting students with special needs. Through her involvement as a student coordinator of the Turner Torch Run, Casey's leadership skills were enriched as she experienced firsthand the good that could come from service to others. Following her tragic death during her freshman year at the University of Texas, Casey's family recognized the opportunity to continue her legacy of service by contributing to the Turner Torch Run in her name. Shortly after, the run adopted a new name, Casey's Run, and embraced the mission of helping students that help students as its primary focus. Today, Casey's Run unites passionate students from campuses throughout the district. For me personally, I chose to serve Casey's Run because it was an opportunity to expand upon my leadership abilities and give directly back to my immediate community. I am different today from my experience being a student coordinator in that I was able to directly see where all the funds from Casey's Run go by being at Special Olympics track meet and witnessing how many happy students were and how happy they were about their accomplishments. Casey's Run has a history of making a difference in the lives of our community's most deserving athletes, the All-Stars. Our athletes compete annually in bowling and track and field, striving each time they enter the field of competition to live the Special Olympics oath. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt. Our 2017 endeavor to be the most successful year ever as we sought to increase the longevity of our CFB ISD Special Olympics program so that the athletes could continue to have the opportunity to experience the fullness of athletic competition. Tonight, we celebrate and thank the people of our community who have helped accomplish our goal. We thank in a special way the faculty and staff who served as campus liaisons, as well as the community sponsors who recognize Casey's Run and our All-Stars as a worthy cause to support and did so by making significant contributions. We honor the memory of Frank Shore, whose family and friends, Team Frank, served as an honorary race starters, who ran in Frank's memory, continuing his legacy of supporting Casey's Run and the health and wellness of our district. And finally, we thank in a most important way Casey's family, Candy and Mel Breckus, who selflessly give because it was Casey's desire to participate in Special Olympics for the rest of her life. What started as their mission to perpetuate her legacy has evolved into a passion to support CFB ISD Special Olympics for the rest of their lives. Being involved with the All-Star athletes and watching them participate and compete brings them much joy. Being involved with their teachers, coaches, mentors, and parents inspires and empowers them. In their words, "With humble gratitude, it is a pleasure and privilege to be involved." Now, it is my great honor to join my fellow student coordinators, along with Candy and Mel, as we present our CFB ISD All-Stars Special Olympic athletes with a check in the amount of $57,000 on behalf of each and every person who use their wings to make
Members of the board, that concludes our incredible recognitions for tonight.
Dr. Burns, I just need to make a few comments here, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. I'm not going to talk anymore about the fine arts presentation because I think they all know how I feel about them, but we do love you, and I don't know if anybody loves you more than I do, but thank you for all you do for our kiddos, and that's all I'm going to say about them. Let's talk about you three, who were honored here tonight first. As I've said more than once, the people you work with, your principals and so forth, they didn't just put all the names of their staff in a hat and just say, "Who's going to be, oh, just pick him," or her. That's not how it works. You earned the right to be sitting here tonight. You earned to be called a very important person because you are, especially to our mission of high achievement. Y'all are the cream of the crop. That's all there is to it. Each one of you have your own talents. Mr. McGill, the things you do, construction-wise, blows my mind, and I know about them, believe it or not. And I personally want to thank you for letting me borrow that pregnancy vest. I've been wearing it for a long time. It's very good. I'll get it back to you, you know, after, sooner or later. Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell, the program at ECHS has just become phenomenal, and obviously, you're a superstar over there. Mr. Ariel and I go back a little ways, and I know how much he treasures everything you do there, and I know those kiddos, bless their hearts. They... That's such an important program, and it's going to pay off in the long run, and that's great. I don't call him Wilk, I call him John Boy. He and I go back a long way. There may be somebody in the district that works longer hours than he does, but if they are, I don't know who they are. He's the hardest-working man I've seen around here in the last 10 years, and that's how long he's been here. The word "no" is not in his vocabulary. Somebody asks him to do something, okay. Doesn't matter what time it is or what it is, he's going to get it done. So congratulations, John Boy. And to the Breckus, the Special Olympics program, I could... We could spend the rest of the night me talking about that and all it means to those kids. They have a real deep spot in my heart. And gosh, what... Casey's Run, $57,000, really? That's incredible. So congratulations to everybody involved with that, but thank you all for staying on top of it. And that, ladies and gentlemen, was all I need to say. Before moving on... Well, I could talk forever, but I know I've got probably other things to do. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the Board encourages comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or a representative of a group, may do so during Agenda Item Number 4A, Audience for Guests. You need to submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table outside. You can put it in the box out there, or you can give it to Ms. Sharon Scribner right over You... When the Board addresses Item Number 4A, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the Board. Now, we will take a recess in case any of you need to go do something else, which what else could it be more important? But if you have to, you have to. But we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and thank you. If you have to leave, thank you for coming, and come back to see us again. We will be back in 10 minutes at 8:05. Thank you. This meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Board of Trustees is called back to order. The Board will now address Agenda Item Number 4A, Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism the Board uses to receive feedback and input from our Comments should pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Our timekeeper, Mr. Goode on the end, will provide a hand signal as the end of your three minutes approaches. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board may defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. Ms. Scribner, are we having the Audience for Guests this evening?
No more than what you said.
When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Our first speaker, Debbie Mock.
My name is Debbie Mock. My address is 1907 Rembling Ridge, Carrollton, 75007. I'm here to discuss wrongful termination. My name is on the agenda tonight for termination. I feel like it is... was wrong. I had been lied to. I tried to do a grievance and was told that I was out of time. However, the certified letter that was mailed to me stated that I was placed on administrative leave on March the 20th. However, it was March 27th, so I was not out of time. I was lied to by Benita Gordon on several different occasions. Like I said, I'm asking for a formal grievance hearing with the Board. I feel like that the punishment with the district is not equal. Bringing up George Thomas, arrested on multiple harassment charges in 2010, does background checks not catch stuff like that? He was actually reprimanded twice for acting inappropriately with students. I've never been written up. I've never been counseled or anything. I made... I was venting on Facebook, which is private settings to my friends only, and I was put on administrative leave immediately following that, and I felt that that was unfair and Dr. Bobby Burns, you spoke at my church one time and stated that we are to consider the students our kids, and I feel like that I put 110% towards my kids at McQuarter Elementary. I took the best care that I could. I'm a nurse, by the way. It's a low-income school. I spent my own money on clothing, food, other things for children in that district without blinking an eye, and I felt like I mentored a lot of students there, and I just feel like that I was treated unfairly. And when I got pulled into the office to be put on administrative leave, I feel like I should have had representation, my immediate supervisor, Sandra Leek. When I got put on by Benita Gordon, she told me I was not allowed to speak to anybody about it. I called my immediate supervisor, Sandra, to seek guidance or something because I've never been, you know, written up or anything, and she stated that she was not allowed to speak to me about it, that she had to refer me back to HR. And Benita would not discuss anything with me as far as how I needed to...
Time.
Is that a baper? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. You will be allowed to pursue further discourse through the grievance process. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Catherine Carlin.
My name is Catherine Carlin. I live at 1210 Derbyshire Lane in Carrollton. President Matthews, members of the Board, Dr. Burns, I'd like to add, actually, I'm pleased to add one more accolade for Fine Arts to Mr. Farr's presentation previously. Actually, one of our McCoy students recently received the Award of Excellence at the National PTA Reflections Contest, so we're really pleased to announce that. And we also appreciate being listed so prominently for PTA and the Reflections Program in the Fine Arts presentation. On behalf of Council PTA, I would like to invite you to our annual meeting coming up this Wednesday at 9 o'clock in this room. It will be our final meeting of the year. We will have board installations. We will have awards to give out, and I'm sure there will be other riveting topics that we will be discussing. So we would be pleased if you would join us in this room at 9 o'clock on Wednesday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mary Lovell.
President Matthews, Honorable Board of Trustees, Dr. Burns, my name is Mary Lovell. I reside at 1307 Barrington Drive in Capel. I'm here on behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Educational Foundation. I was invited to leave a letter with a card informing you about our destination discovery and give you some exciting updates on it. This is a STEM summer camp for middle school students, June 13th, 14th, and 15th. We are thrilled that we have three wonderful business partners who are presenting. Each will take a complete day, LBJ Express, DART, and Essilor. We have right now approximately 100 students registered, and so we have room for some more. And right now, we're soliciting for lunch donations for the volunteers and for the faculty of the day, and financial supporters for T-shirts, scholarship support for children for whom the tuition may be a little out of their family's reach. And we're also looking for community volunteers to come and help for the day at Barbara Bush Middle School. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Wallace.
Good evening. My name is Amy Wallace. I live at 1129 Yorkshire Drive in Carrollton. I am a parent of three CFPISD students, one ACE and two former LEAP students. I'm also currently serving as a board member of the CFPAGT, the Parents Association, supporting families of gifted students in our district and supporting advanced academic services. I'd like to say thank you to the Advanced Academic Services Department for serving our ACE students well at their current level of staffing. I think that they have a smaller staff now than they've ever had before, and with 34 campuses to cover, I'm not sure how they manage it so well. I think that their dedicated team works diligently on all the campuses year-round, so thank you for that. And I would also like to thank the School Board for the consideration of appropriation of funds for... Sorry? For the World Languages Curriculum. This is an important first step. Hopefully, additional staff resources will also be considered to support AAS's efforts to serve the district's mission of high achievement for every student. And while I no longer have an elementary-age student, our Parent Association is very excited about the new ACE Math Program being piloted at five elementary schools. We look forward to the added implementation in other elementaries in the coming years. This will be a huge improvement to the ACE program by identifying more clearly what skills the students need and by adding more depth and complexity to their math program. Thank you very much and allowing me to speak on behalf of the CFPAGT, the Parents Association for Gifted and Talented.
And our next speaker, Neil Brady.
Hi, my name is Neil Brady. I reside at 2692 Waterford Way in Carrollton. My wife and I have two children in the CFPISD School District. We have a fifth grader at Country Place Elementary and also a second grader at the same school. Two things... I guess the reason for me coming tonight was two things that we're trying to understand or get more information on or receive more clarification on. We've heard from some teachers and other parents, and these parents appear to have the same concerns that we do about some of the changes that will be occurring for the 2017-2018 school year at the middle school level. I'll bring each item up separately, and if you guys, if you could, the Board could address my items separately. The first one was, we've heard that there will be a loss of an elective to add a reading or writing class even for those students who have tested and performed above grade level, those who are in the ACE program. And the second piece of information that we've heard about is generalizing history and science for pre-AP students. So that would be putting those students who would be traditionally able to be in a AP, pre-AP program into the general population to try and better serve the total population. So as I said, I'm just here tonight trying to understand a little bit more about if these decisions have been finalized for the next school year. Just trying to understand a little bit more about the process.
Dr. Burns?
Yes. We'd be happy to visit with you, Ms. Warnock or Ms. Bailey. We'd be happy to, with a time convenient for you, and kind of explain to you where we're going with that and what is... It's a curriculum initiative. The Board gives us kind of a scope of authority, and within that scope, her department's work to meet the needs of the kids, but she can explain to you where they're going with it.
Okay. That'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. As stated earlier, the Board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. However, the Board may refer the comments to the Administration for further review or research. We will now proceed to our next agenda item, Number 4B, Board Operations Consent Agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, Board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none and seeing none, Board members, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda? Mr. Fleming?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is.
Do I have a second? Mr. Ramos, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, with a vote of six in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Our next agenda item is closed... No, excuse me. I'm jumping cart before the horse. We've got some real important business to take care of now. I got it. Our next agenda item is Number 4C, Consider Selection of Elementary School Principals. Dr. Burns?
Members of the Board and to our audience, before we get to our recommendations, I do have a few announcements. I want to talk a little bit about our retirements, and so tonight, you may have already heard, but Mr. Joe Pouncy from Newman Smith has told his staff last week that he's retiring after 34 years at Newman Smith. We will be bringing that recommendation to you in June, okay? So that deals with Mr. Pouncy's retirement. Our other retirees, and I think I see them out here, so I'm going to take a minute, and Mr. Pouncy included in this announcement, is that we are so grateful and indebted to the service of these great principals that served our district. We talk about student achievement. These people eat, sleep, dream it, believe it, all the time, and so we're going to miss them greatly, but they have left an everlasting mark on the achievement, the philosophy, the positive attitudes of the staffs that they led. And so I know they're here, or at least I've seen a few of them, so I'm going to announce them, and I'm going to ask them to stand so we can thank them for their service and tell them how much we appreciate them. So, Mr. Phil Jackson, since I'm looking at you, you're going to have to stand up. Penny Coney? Penny Coney, stand up. You didn't stand up very long, Penny. Quick, stand up. Okay, all right, okay. Bridget O'Connor? Where's Bridget? And Mr. Bob Tipton, I don't see Bob here tonight, but we wanted to extend our appreciation and gratitude to him as well. And with Bob's announcement of his retirement, I want to talk to you about a reassignment. Does not require any board action, but I do want to announce that tonight. And so we have Dr. Jose Ramos, who is here, who is the current principal at Janie Stark, and he is going to go head up our Mary Grimes Education Alternative Center for next year, so we are going to wish him well, and know he's going to do a great job over there. So now to the recommendations. Board members, we're going to do these one at a time and ask you to obviously consider our recommendation for each one. And so I know I have that candidate stand. We're going to start with Ms. Shanna Brown. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Shanna as she stands up. She's currently the AP at Farmers Branch Elementary in Kent. She has been with CFP since 2004, and pending what you do next and select her as an elementary principal, she will be assigned to Janie Stark next year, Ms. Shanna Brown.
Board members, this item is marked as an action item. Do I have a motion? Mr. Matthews? Mr. Shackman?
I am honored to move that we approve the appointment of Shanna Brown to be the principal at Janie Stark with all of our best wishes.
Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. Klein. All those in favor, raise your... All those in favor, raise your hand. That vote is unanimous. Congratulations, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Matthews and members of the board, our next candidate tonight for elementary principal is Mr. Matthew Pruitt. Matthew, stand up. Matthew is currently assistant principal at Sheffield. He has been with CFB since 2007, and his assignment will be McCamey Elementary.
Again, board members, this is an action item. Do I have a motion? Ms. Klein?
I would move that we accept the administration's recommendation of Mr. Pruitt for the principal at McCamey.
Have a motion for Ms. Klein. Do I have a second?
I'd like a second.
Do I have a second for Mr. Fleming? All those in favor, raise your hand. That vote is unanimous. Dr. Burns?
All right. Mr. Matthews, members of the board, our next candidate is Ms. Monica Cohen. Monica, stand up. Monica is currently assistant principal at Janey Stark. She has been with CFB since 2005, and her assignment for 1718 will be Carrollton Elementary.
One more time, board members, this is an action item. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goode?
Mr. Matthews, I move that we approve Ms. Cohen as the new principal at Carrollton Elementary.
Thank you. Mr. Goode, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Shackman. All those in favor, raise your hand. That vote is unanimous. Dr. Burns?
All right. Mr. Matthews, members of the board, we have one more to complete our foursome tonight, and that is Ms. Shanaa Ahmad. Shanaa, would you please stand? She is currently the assistant principal at Los Colinas Elementary and Goode Elementary. She's been with the CFB team since 2006, and her assignment will be Goode Elementary.
Board members, I believe this will be the last action item for this particular idea. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goode?
Mr. Matthews, I move that we approve Ms. Ahmad as the new principal at Goode Elementary.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Ramos?
Second motion.
Got a second from Mr. Ramos. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is unanimous. Congratulations, ma'am.
And Mr. Matthews and members of the board, if I can make one other comment, you know, we've set on a mission to build our team from the classroom up, and the people you are selecting tonight, together, combined, have over 46 years of CFB experience working on our system.
We do love to grow our own, I can tell you that. All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Congratulations to all of you. Our next agenda item is 4D Budget Report 2017-18. Dr. Burns?
Mr. Matthews, members of the board, as you know, we really don't ever stop working on the budget. We just change the years, I think, after it, but we're kind of always, as Mark used to say, we're in always kind of three. We're finishing one, in the middle of one, and starting one. And this is the time of year where we start to look at our 1718 budget. And I do want to preface a little bit before I turn it over to Ms. Tillman is that we want to thank our community again for their support of our school system. Without your support, we wouldn't have been able to meet this year's budget balance in 1617, nor would we be able to bring to you a balanced budget tonight for 1718. So, members of our community, thank you for supporting the students of this school district. Ms. Tillman?
Thank you. Before we get started this evening, I did want to take a moment to recognize Scott Roderick and the business office staff for recently receiving the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is the 15th year in a row that the district has received these awards. In looking at the prior-year recipients, only 19 school districts in Texas received the ASBO Award. That's out of over 1,000 districts in the state of Texas, with only four receiving it for 15 years in a row. For the GFOA Award, only 21 school districts in Texas have taken the time and gone through the process of receiving this award. The award represents a significant achievement by the district. It reflects a commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the awards, the district had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. We are very proud of our business office staff and their commitment to the district, and we would like to say thank you to them this evening. So, thank you, Mr. Roderick and your staff.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to present our resource allocation. The 2017 Texas State Legislature is currently in session. These are the proposed legislations that we have had our eye on. House Bill 1 and Senate Bill 1, these are appropriation bills. Both have been voted out of their respective chambers and are entering conference committee at this point. Some major differences is how these are going to fund their plans. The House is proposing using a partial amount of the rainy day fund, where the Senate wants to delay payments to the transportation fund. A compromise we hope will be worked out in the coming days. House Bill 21 and Senate Bill 2145, these are education funding plans. It appears House Bill 21 has a little bit more traction. People are intrigued by Senate Bill 2145 because it is supposed to simplify our education funding. House Bill 21 is scheduled to put in $1.8 billion back into education, and for Senate Bill 2145, the details are still vague, so determination if this will help or hurt the district is still unclear. House Bill 2549 relates to TRS active care. At this stage, districts with greater than 1,000 employees will be required to exit TRS. This is important to us because that would make us have to go to the marketplace to attain insurance provider from a different carrier for CFB employees. Senate Bill 1122 relates to Dallas County Schools. This was filed by Senator Don Huffans. This is unique to us because Dallas County Schools provides our transportation services. If this bill passes, then we would have to go out and get transportation from a third party or bring it back in-house, and the budget implications is unknown at this point, but we're watching that very closely. And then Senate Bill 3 is Education Savings Account Program. What this does is establishes vouchers in the state of Texas. We continue to watch this closely because this could have a direct impact on our district As we look at the 2016 budget recap and the impact of the TRE, the district approved a 3.5% pay adjustment for 1617. We were also able to continue our technology upgrades and purchase of mobile devices. The board approved purchases of approximately almost $6 million in February and March. Some other program enhancements, the district has tried to reduce our class size. We've added additional teaching units to areas of our greatest need. We've also had the ability to address some of our facility and safety needs. This includes security vestibles at Polk and Bush, some playground equipment upgrades, and some interior and exterior enhancements. The TRE also has allowed us not to have to make any drastic reductions to our existing district programs. For the 1617 budget, we also budgeted about $400,000 to purchase additional buses to help replace our aging fleet, but with the unknown for Dallas County Schools, that purchase has been on hold. The TRE has also helped us maintain our fund balance target. That gives us financial stability to address any things, any unexpected items that may come up. And also, enrollment for 1617, we budgeted an ADA decline or average daily attendance of about 350 students. By year-to-date, actuals are showing that our ADA decline is trending more towards about 400 students. This is a student-to-teacher ratio slide. This is a trend over time. This represents all teachers and all populations. In 1213, our teacher-student ratio peaked at 16.2. The district has tried to make a conscious effort to reduce this ratio, and in 1617, you can see our student-to-teacher ratio was less at 15.1. Looking at our 1617 budget and our projected actuals, as you know, in 2016-17, we adopted a balanced budget. You know, our biggest drivers of our revenue budget are taxes and student enrollment. Currently, we're projecting our projected revenue will come in at $254.7 million. That's about $1.8 million less than what we projected, or about half a percent of our budget. Looking at our uses of funds, our general operations is expected to have a positive variance of about $3.7 million. Our TIF payment is looking to be about $350,000 less, and so, we're projecting if all these things become true, then we think we're going to have a $2.9 million positive variance for 1617. This slide represents our general fund balance from 2007 to 2016. If we realize a positive variance of $2.9 million, our fund balance will be a little over $82 million. Our Vision 2020 goal, we hope to have 135 days in fund balance. Based on our projections, we would have 137, so we'd meet that target. As we were planning for the 1718, this quote resonated with us. "The quality of an organization cannot exceed the quality of its people." Our top budget priority is our Carrollton Farmer's Ranch ISD employees. As we've talked to the District Improvement Council, the Board of Trustees, our principals, and community members, attracting and retaining the very best employees is our number-one As we look at our 2017-18 budget priorities, we want to provide you a pay adjustment scenarios. We want to continue our longevity pay as well as our performance pay. And in recent years, the district has made a significant commitment to our technology upgrades. Right now, we haven't zeroed in on a number, but the technology upgrade allocation will be dependent on our final revenue estimates. And Ms. Warnock can talk a little bit more about our pilot full-day pre-K and some other program enhancements.
Thank you, Mr. Roderick. This next year is part of our budget priorities, and with the board's direction, we intend to pilot full-day pre-K at four locations. This will include our eligible students and also some spots that are open for pay-for pre-K. We currently have a waiting list on our pay-for pre-K enrollment, and our full-day pre-K for eligible students, we anticipate will be full at those locations. So, we'll need additional staff to meet the needs of the full-day program. And you know from the state that we receive half-day funding for pre-K, but we believe that early investment in students' learning is very important for a firm foundation, so with the board's direction, we're proceeding with those plans to pilot. We also have an additional increase in minutes being required for our half-day pre-K programs by the state. That additional increase in minutes required for the half-day program means that we need additional support at the campuses to provide the teachers a lunch and a conference period. And so, we need additional support to help students with lunch. If you've ever been at pre-K, try to help students with milk cartons and fruit snacks, and you know, they need assistance. So, we will need additional support staff there at our half-day pre-K. We also have some additional program enhancements that we are looking at. One of the priorities with the funding from the TRE was to lower our class-size ratio. So, we looked at where our class sizes were large and what the data told us about performance, and one of those was about literacy for our middle school and high school students. We've looked at multiple measures around literacy, both our state testing data as well as our AP data. Writing is a component on all advanced placement exams at the high school level. Currently, our students in 5th grade receive 120 minutes of literacy instruction a day, and that's cut in less than half to about 48 minutes a day when they transition to 6th grade. We believe that we all benefit from becoming better readers, writers, and thinkers, and so have made the purposeful decision to add 14 units at our middle school to increase literacy for students and reduce class size because we're not reducing other staff to allow for that. So, that will be also a staff-size reduction with an achievement outcome. We also are going to continue the board's direction in targeting few or no waivers at our elementary. We believe that small class sizes, particularly at K-1, 2, are important for a strong foundation moving forward. And we also will be having targeted support for campuses that have a need either academically or with special student populations that we are targeting the increased support there.
Now, we want to talk about compensation. Our Vision 2020 goal for beginning teacher pay, we wanted it to be $55,000 in 2020. Our raise proposal for 1718 is a 4% raise for teacher and auxiliary staff and a 3% raise for professional administrative pay for and above. We also want to continue our performance pay and longevity pay as well. This slide represents our beginning teacher pay survey for the last three years. You can see, we are in the bottom path of these local districts. You can see in 1617, our beginning teacher pay is $50,750. At our November work study, we had a question that asked, "When will we know about raises for other districts?" Because we're in a legislative year, districts have been slow to determine their raise amounts. We have heard that Frisco, I think, is going to propose a 1% raise of midpoint, and other districts, it's not confirmed, but they're talking about between 2% and 3% as well. This is the beginning teacher pay for 1617 in the current tax rates. The CFB tax rate currently is $1.3917. We're the third lowest tax rate among these districts. The only two districts that have a lower tax rate than us is HEB and Richardson, and both of these districts have not passed the TRE. This represents some historical raise information. In 1112, this was the start of the state's budget reduction and cut to education, so we did not give a raise in 1112. And you can see the progressions from 1112 to our proposal of 1718. Another question from the November work study was, "Has there ever been a 4% or higher raise?" The most recent one was in '08-'09, a 4.5% raise to teachers. In 2001 and 2002, we gave a 5.1% increase, and in 1999-2000, we gave a 9.5% increase to teachers. At the November work study, the question was asked, "Have we ever considered increasing salary levels with higher levels of experience?" There's a lot of data on this slide, but we wanted to demonstrate a teacher's progression over their tenure with CFB. This teacher started in 1988-89 with a starting salary of $21,816. With 28 years' experience, the teacher will make $70,383. This doesn't include any performance pay or longevity pay. Looking at the far-right-hand column, during her tenure with CFB, she received raises ranging from 0% to 10.94%. Taking the data from the previous slide, this compares our new hire schedule versus our sample teacher pay progression. For a teacher coming into our district with zero years' experience, they would make $50,700. For a teacher coming into our district with zero years' experience, they would make $50,750 compared to our sample teacher of $70,383, which is a difference of $19,633. If a teacher, for example, comes in from DISD with 28 years' experience, they would make, coming new into the CFP, they would make $60,287 versus $70,383, which is a difference of $10,096. So, by the teacher having continuous employment with CFP, they've built up equity over their tenure here. Some other compensation questions from the November work study. Another question was, "Would an increase in longevity pay be if it went from $100 to $120 per year of service?" The estimated increase in cost would be about $125,000 for a total estimated annual cost of about $668,000. Another question was, "Is $55,000 enough for beginning teacher pay in 2020?" This is really dependent on other districts. If other districts are giving the same raise as we are, then we're not going to make up any other ground versus other comparative districts in our area. And another question was, "Can we compare other options for teacher raise models like 3%?" A 3% raise would cost the district approximately $4.5 million, but our concern there is, if we give 3%, then we won't get ahead of our other districts and make up any ground versus our local districts. Looking at our 2017-18 estimated changes on the revenue side, our local revenue is estimated to increase $12.4 million. We've met with our appraisal districts, and they've told us that they probably see appraised values increasing about 7%. That means our property taxes is going to increase about $12.4 million. We always want to remind you that if we don't get the same increase in our property values in the following year, then our state funding will be impacted in 2018-19. Looking at our state revenue side, we're expecting our state revenue to decrease $6.5 million. We're budgeting a slight decrease due to enrollment loss of about $400,000. We're expected to lose $10.2 million from prior-year increase in property value growth from 2015 to 2016. And we're expected to gain $3.7 million in our Tier Two funding. What this is, this is pennies above a dollar that are not subject to recapture and are equalized at the Austin yield. This is subject to legislative action, so if the budget needs a budget reduction, then it may be necessary for the chambers to reduce this amount, so this is not guaranteed at this point. And also, we're going to get a small increase from our supplemental state payment for TIF. We also wanted to include the recapture is going to increase $2.5 million, and our TIF payment is going to increase $3.1 million. On the surface, this looks like the district is gaining, but once we include our recapture and our TIF payments, which we don't have any control over, our total revenue is relatively flat for 17-18. Looking at our 2017 estimated changes on the expenditure side for the general fund, our campuses, they didn't receive no change in their first student allocation. There was a slight adjustment for some pre-K changes. The campuses had about $2.2 million to allocate per their discretion. This was based on student numbers when we did the allocation. And our departments, there was no change from the prior-year allocation, except with some exceptions from contractual increases and decreases. Our payroll adjustment will cost the district about $5.8 million, based on our 3% and 4% scenario we previously mentioned. Some other items is the $2.5 million increase in our Chapter 41 recapture payment. We're also going to see a $3.1 million increase in our TIF payment from prior-year property value growth in those TIF zones. And another item that we want to point out is our transportation costs. These are unknown at this point in time, but we're watching that very closely to see so we can be flexible to accommodate whatever this may come in. And our technology improvements, this allocation will be dependent on our final revenue estimates. We adopted in 2016-17 a balanced budget. And for looking at our 2017-18 preliminary budget, our tax revenues are going to go up about $12.4 million. Per capita in other state will decrease about $6.5 million, and the other ones are staying relatively the same, so that means our total sources is going to be budgeted at $260.8 million, which is a $4.9 million increase from the prior year, which is about 1.9% increase. Looking at the uses of funds, our general operations, it'll be very similar to our previous 2016-17 budget of $223 million. Our TIF payment is scheduled to increase $3.1 million, and our recapture payment is scheduled to increase $2.5 million. But for 17-18, we're proposing a balanced budget. This demonstrates a 17-18 budget by major components. Our local sources, which include our taxes and interest, that makes up about 85.5%. Our state revenue makes up about 12.9%, and our federal revenue makes up about 1.5%. We did a kind of a comparison. We looked back to 2010-11 to see how much state revenue we got and how much that percent was. In 2010-11, our state revenue was a little over 30% compared to 12.9% for 2017-18. Looking at our payroll expenditures, our payroll budget makes up about 70.8% of our total budget. Our TIF payment comes in at about 11.25%, and our recapture payment is a little over 3% of our total budget. But if we exclude our TIF payment and our recapture payment, our total payroll makes up about 82.74% of our total budget. This is just a representation. If we realize a balanced budget for 2017-18, our fund balance would be about a little over $82 million. Our Vision 2020 goal is to have more than 130 days in fund balance, and with this scenario, we would have approximately 135, which would meet our Vision 2020 goal. What's next? The legislative session officially ends on Monday, May 29. We will continue to watch the impact of the bills to see what kind of effect that will have on CFP. We will continue to look at our enrollment trends to see if it's increasing or decreasing because that has a major effect on our revenue projections, and we'll try to continuously improve our operational effectiveness. To expand on what that means is, we continue to review our pay practices. We try to maximize all our available funding sources, which includes our open enrollment and our pay-for pre-K program. We're trying to maximize efficiencies in our energy management strategies, and we're always looking to consolidation of non-instructional to try to reduce our square footage in our Our next steps at the June board meeting, we will bring back a compensation package for the board to approve. We'll also have a budget hearing in August, and we will adopt the 17-18 budget and tax rate in August as well. As we come to the conclusion, this is a quote from Jacob Lu: "The budget is not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of our values and aspirations." Dr. Burns, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Roderick. Ms. Tillman, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Thank you, Scott. We appreciate what you and Tony do. We know how hard that is.
If the board has any direction towards where we're headed in terms of compensation, I think our direction was to get a balanced budget, so that's what we've got presented. Obviously, we'll continue to work on it, and then the official budget, obviously, is in August, but this is what we heard from the work studies and what the direction we've given in the past, and so that's the budget we hope we've brought to you tonight is what you directed us to do.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is closed session. Closed meeting is authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071 Consultation with Attorney, 551.072 Real Property, 551.074 Personnel Matters, 551.076 Security Devices, 551.082 School Children/District Employees/Disciplinary Matter or Complaint, 551.0821 Personally Identifiable Student Information, 551.084 Investigation. Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, Attorney Consultation, Consultation with School District Attorney Regarding Legal Issues Concerning Termination of Probationary Contract Employees at the End of the Current Contract Period, and pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, Personnel Matters, Deliberation Regarding Termination of Probationary Contracts at the End of the Current Contract Period. The board will now adjourn to closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071 Consultation with the District's Attorney, and 551.074 Considering Personnel Matters. Audience members are welcome to remain here in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the executive conference room for deliberations on closed-meeting items. This meeting is recessed at 8:55 p.m. Regarding this agenda item and consideration of possible action regarding termination of probationary contract employees at the end of the current contract period concerning Brian Albers and Debbie Mock, do I have a motion? Mr. Goode?
Mr. Matthews, I'll make a motion regarding one person only.
Okay.
And I'd like to move that the board find that it is in the best interest of the district to terminate the probationary employee contract of Bryant Albers, effective at the end of the current contract term. And I further move that the board authorize the superintendent to deliver written notice of such action to this employee within the timeline specified by the law.
I have a motion from Mr. Goode. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Second by Mr. Fleming. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, none against. Ms. Klein?
I have another motion.
Go ahead.
I would move that the board find that it is in the best interest of the district to terminate the probationary employee contract of Debbie Mock, effective at the end of the current contract term, and I further move that the board authorize the superintendent to deliver written notice of such action to this employee within the timeframe specified by law.
I have a motion from Ms. Klein. Do I have a second? Mr. Goode? I have a second from Mr. Goode. All those in favor, raise your hand. I have four in favor, two...
Two abstention.
Abstention. And one abstention, one no. And now, ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is another closed meeting is authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071 Consultation with Attorney, Real Property, 551.074 Personnel Matters, 551.076 Security Devices, 551.082 School Children/District Employees/Disciplinary Matter or Complaint, 551.0821 Personally Identifiable Student Information, 551.084 Investigation. Pursuant to Section 551.071 and Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, Attorney Consultation and Real Property, Deliberation Regarding Legal Issues Concerning Potential Sale of Real Property Owned by the District. Audience members are welcome to stay in the boardroom as board members recess again. Back to the executive conference room for deliberation on this closed-meeting item. This meeting is recessed at 9:45 p.m. Board members, would any of you happen to have any comments you'd like to make at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 10:05 p.m.